Call this meeting to order. First order of business is closed meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Be it resolved, Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph 1, Discussion, Consideration or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining or Resignation of Specific Officers, Appointees, or Employees of Any Public Body. Number one, Alcohol Safety Action Program. Madam Secretary.
Ms. Blavatsky?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair Faizakowski?
Aye.
Six ayes.
We're in closed session. Okay, do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Madam Secretary, if you'll call a roll.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Blavatsky? Aye. Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Faizakowski?
Aye.
Six ayes.
And I'll turn it over to County Administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, if we could all rise for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead everyone in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
All right, first item, Presentations, Recognitions, and Awards. Virginia Department of Transportation, David Clark. How are you, sir?
Doing well, thank you very much. Good evening. Yes, kind of a brief maintenance update for you. Our maintenance forces have been trying to get some stuff done in between the various types of storms that we get this time of year. Did have a little bit of snow to deal with, not a whole lot, but a bit of a surprise on Saturday morning to find some. Not totally a surprise, we had people out, but they didn't expect to get as much as we did. And then, you know, a few weeks before that, we had all the rain. Spent quite a lot of time the weeks following those heavy rains, cleaned up a lot of debris. Dry Run got hit pretty hard up in kind of the Mount Tabor area and washed out a lot of those pipers. Still trying to get some permanent repairs done on Dry Run. But other than that, we've been doing a lot of, trying to get a lot of ditching and pipe replacements done ahead of our paving schedule, just coming up here in a couple of months with some other pipe replacements out Pilot Road, Allegheny Springs Road, we did do some ditching on Craig Creek, Pilot Road and at Willis Hollow. Patching when we can, we can get hot mix. Of course, that's the real heavy season coming up, as soon as it gets warmer and the plants open up, we'll be starting a lot of patching. Had our big mower out, the Vomax out on the Catava Road, doing some brush removal. Some shoulder work based on a complaint out on McFloyd Road. The construction projects, not a lot right now that aren't, the big projects have been going on for a while, 81 of the New River, Exit 114 Bridge. They're getting ready to shift traffic. They've got one, they need to move traffic over, that's going to cause some delays when we have to close a lane to tie in that detour. It's just a detour around the current bridge. The bridge is there, they got traffic on the new bridge, tear down the old and build another one there, so it's going to, just the tie-in part to make that a smooth transition is going to take some lane closures. We'll be doing a bridge on North Fork Road, Route 603, kind of in the Toronto area this summer. That'll require closing that bridge for a few months, and there'll be a detour around Flatwoods and Restale Roads. We're going to be doing some work out there to make that detour based on the increased traffic that those two roads aren't used to, do some improvements to make that a very visible detour, but it's right there at the church is where that particular bridge is. And that's all I have for our updates. What we've been up to this past week, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Supervisor Demoss?
I don't have any questions. Thanks for coming this evening.
Supervisor Biggs?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank David for updating me on 81 at the MPO meeting, and I don't know if you just want to say something briefly so that folks out there will see it on the tape about the fact that things will get a little bit busy when construction starts, especially at that bottleneck place. You might want to mention that.
Right. We are doing some 81 projects, not a lot in this area right now, those are still in the planning stages, but that's the good part. There is one that's been in planning for quite a while in design, and that's going to be in Roanoke County between the Mason Creek Exit, Exit 141, and the 581, Interstate 581 Exit into Roanoke, which is Exit 143. So in those two miles, 141 to 143, in both directions, they're adding another lane each way, so you'll have three lanes there eventually. After all these projects are done, we'll have a corridor planned as three-lane each side of 81 for most of it. But that was one of the easier parts, it started a while ago, it's fairly flat, the part that's obviously going to be harder is 81 northbound from 118 down to 128, a few of the others. So along with that, we are also, we are doing some ramp improvements south up here, mostly in Pulaski County, extending acceleration lanes. It's the same kind of thing we're going to do, we're doing currently at Exit 105, at Radford Exit just before the bridge over the New River, but that's still in construction and will be for a while right there. We're working on other fronts, as was discussed in the MPO meeting, on trying just to reduce incidents take. There's this program, it's called TRIPS, and I can't remember exactly what it all stands for, a letter stamp or something. It's about working really closely with the wrecker services, the towing services, to add incentives for getting out and getting wrecks cleared quicker. They sign up for the program, they have to have a certain, you know, amount of equipment, the right equipment, bring the right equipment to the scene so you're not back and forth, spending a lot of time getting things out there. And it's worked well in other states, we're just not starting in Virginia, but that hopefully will help some of the clear time when you can't build a road quickly, maybe you can get, work the other end to try to get some of these incidents cleared up quicker. But it was, it was a very good little update that we had.
Thank you.
Supervisor Blevins?
Thank you for being here. I understand that they, at some point, there's planning or some idea that they will do 24/7 wrecker services and be put in place on part of the interstate. Do you know any information on that?
Not in particular, I know sometimes we will, in bad weather, we will have wreckers on call in case of the steep hills like down in Toronto, if they're having problems on a regular basis. That will all be rolled into that TRIPS program, no matter what time of day, they'll still have to respond within a certain time.
Accordingly, so it can get cleared up very quickly.
Right.
And nothing else, just appreciate your service, VDOT, and all of your members, keep the roads clean and clear.
Thank you.
Supervisor King?
I've just got one question. Now, Meta Creek is finished down on the far end. You said we could start discussing about restricting?
Yes, yeah. I'm glad you reminded me of that, I'm really about that, but yeah, we'll get that, it was a truck restriction request for through trucks on Meta Creek Road, and I'll see if they've started that. They've had that request, but they wanted to hold on, but I'll make sure that they remind them that they probably do that study once the intersection is done.
Aye. Appreciate it. Vice Chair Bone?
So I was on Dry Run Road, so I understand what you're talking about, at that old mill right in the middle of Dry Run. I was talking to the owner of that little home right there, and he was like, mm, I think we need another full pipe crossing underneath the road because it dumps right at the mill and it's tearing apart the foundation of the mill when it's full, you know, because it does go over the road. And then just down from there, there's like three pipes, three or four or five pipes underneath the road that he said were all cockeyed when this last, you know, rain came. And they're kind of only half-open at this point, and so there's a lot of work that has to happen.
Yes.
Do you have an idea of timing for especially that piece because it looks like, you know, it's half-full, you know, we don't have the whole pipe to use?
Right. I know offhand, no. I'll find out what they plan, if they've ordered it, if they're, a lot of times we will try to upsize a pipe, it's tough in that situation because you can only work with the road that you've got, but I'll find out and get you a note before the next meeting.
It kind of made sense that they're putting bigger rocks on the road now, but all through, the whole creek, it's like, you could probably pick up truckloads of your fill that you've used over the years, and you go to the bottom down by Catava Road, it's completely, the creek bed, there is no creek bed anymore, it's all that runoff fill that you've put in the roads that have run off.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any, I don't know, do you call it abatement or something like that to preserve, you know, they used to have wildlife, crawfish in those streams and different things like that, but VDOT doesn't really pay attention too much to that stuff anymore, or?
Well, we have, whatever state laws are applicable. I mean, the road was built while the creek was there because that was the easiest place to build the road, and naturally, anything close to it will erode and wash into it.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
David, I just got a few things, and I think I've asked you this one before when you talked about the bridge you're replacing on North Fork near Flatwoods. Is that going to be one of those prefab bridges?
Yeah. It's going to be, yeah, it's prefab concrete beams placed on the.
So that ought to be fairly quick that they?
That would be quicker, yes.
Okay. And the other thing, just a follow-up, last year, we rode that road to look at it, to look into restricting tractor-trailers on the whole length of that road. Have you heard anything?
No, it's still, it's the difficulty in deciding where in the Ellet end that you begin that or end it, whichever way you want to look.
Yeah.
I mean, they can do all right from Ellet a certain distance, but it's been hard trying to find the offending traffic pattern that we're going up.
Did they?
See to Run or Janelle or down to the valley.
Those traffic, those pneumatic traffic counters, are they able to distinguish tractor-trailer from car?
Yes, so that should be, yeah.
Have they put them out at all?
I haven't seen them.
Okay.
They've done the kind that does that.
I was just curious, I mean, the accident rate out there certainly doesn't, I don't think we could use that as the main factor to restrict vehicles, but certainly, the day we rode it, it was quite evident to everybody in the van that it's not really a road designed for that type of traffic, but yeah, I appreciate if you could.
Okay, I'll look into that.
My last question is, and I would get in a lot of trouble if I didn't ask this, when they get ready to close Mount Pleasant to do the upper end, is the contractor going to contact the schools to let them know so that they can adjust their?
They're supposed to, and we'll double-check and make sure our office does, too.
Okay, so both of you will be doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. That's all I've got. Anybody have any follow-up? Nope, that's it. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, David.
All right, next item of business is public address. No one has signed up for public address, but if there's anybody that would like to come forward and address the board with an issue, you would have four minutes if you'll come forward, state your name and your address. Seeing no one moving, we'll go ahead and close public address. Addendum?
No addendum this evening, sir.
We have no addendum, moving on. Items of consent. Do we have a motion for items of consent?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Madam Secretary, if you'll call a roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Blavatsky?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Chair Faizakowski?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, new business. Take Back the Night Rally?
Move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Blavatsky?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Chair Faizakowski?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, reports. County Attorney.
I have to report, Mr. Chair.
What?
Okay. To the point. County Administrator.
Mr. Chair and Board Members, just one item. I know that the public is well aware of the issue with the coronavirus, COVID-19 issue that's out there right now. I just want to mention that the county is closely monitoring a number of resources on this item. We will take our cues and direction from the local health department. The health department is the one that is tasked with the overall health of our community, and we will certainly be in contact with them. We do have a link on the county's website for the information that we have so far. We will be discussing with department directors continuity of service should we have to have a quarantine at any point in the future, but at this point, we're just continuing to monitor things and discuss possible next steps, and we will certainly let the board know if anything changes, and we will certainly let the public know as well. But my best advice to the public right now is to pay close attention to what comes out of the local health department and also the CDC. Those are our two main resources. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, our Board will go ahead and we'll start with Supervisor Biggs.
Okay, the only thing I was going to bring up is, I know there was some discussion about whether to hold a meeting when we had a short agenda or not, and I wondered if that is going to become a discussion, like whenever there's a short agenda, shouldn't we have a public discussion about what we would do if there was a short agenda? I know with the coronavirus, many things might be changing in the future even about how we meet, but it's been, you know, sort of the practice of the Board to meet two times a month except in December, and I think, I remember a couple times maybe when a July meeting was canceled, but since we have that set in practice, I just wondered if we are going to make changes, shouldn't we have some kind of way to address that as a board and then sufficient, I guess sufficient announcement to our public since they, you know, plan on us being here? That was the only thing I was going to bring up.
May I add? No comment? Okay.
Supervisor Demoss?
Two things, and I'm taking advantage of the fact that this is a short meeting because one of my things is going to be kind of long. These are both budget-related items. Yeah, sit back. These are both budget-related items. The first one is quick. When we got back from the VACO Conference in November, in one of my Board reports at a meeting right after that, I think it was the VACO Conference, I mentioned the idea of the possibility of having a, kind of a discretionary fund set up for each supervisor, a low amount, $5,000 to $10,000. It was something that I, some information that I'd gotten from another supervisor at the conference, and then immediately after that, Chair Faizakowski brought up a project that he was interested in pursuing in his district that would be under that $5,000 cap. So I was interested in seeing as we move forward to the budget if that might be something that other supervisors are interested in looking into and how that might work out on a county level. So just kind of a note for a future work session, something that I would love for all of you guys to be thinking about. And then the other item is also a budget-related item, another thing just to consider for a future work session, I want to go ahead and put the plug out there for Onward NRV. I did discuss this last year about considering full funding of their budget request, and just a little bit of background on Onward NRV, I'm our liaison to that organization. The mission is to attract and retain world-class jobs, investment, and talent in the New River Valley by marketing the region as a premier destination to live, work, and do business, and by building collaborative partnerships that support economic vitality. Those partnerships are a mixture of public, private, and then higher education, and so you've got representatives from private industry, you've got government representatives, you've got higher education representatives collaborating together on ways that we can promote and encourage people to either relocate to the region, businesses to locate here, businesses that already exist here to expand here. They're currently executing a five-year strategy that they've worked quite diligently towards accomplishing the goals. The projection of the five-year strategy is, it is projected to stimulate $180 million in new capital investment in our community, 3,488 new jobs with some of those being secondary, so you'd have new jobs related to the businesses that locate here, and then because there are new people, other new jobs secondarily that would be created. The goal is to funnel new money into the region, and if they stay on track to accomplish their five-year goals, they expect it to add approximately $84 million in new customer expenditures regionally, which they project would generate $611,233 in local sales tax. That's just in the sales tax, not property taxes and stuff like that. Onward NRV was formed 30 years ago by the counties of Montgomery, Pulaski, Floyd, and Giles, and the city of Radford, and so of course they've got quite a bit of history and quite a bit of history of accomplishment in the region. And so on to the funding, they're requesting a rate of $1 per capita, so their funding request is $1 per person. Currently, five of the 10 towns in the region are also contributing to Onward NRV in addition to their respective county's contribution, so those are completely discretionary and unrelated to the population, so like the towns of Christiansburg and Blacksburg are not contributing a dollar per person the way that they're requesting Montgomery County to. We are the only county in Onward NRV's region that is not currently funding at the dollar per person, we're funding at 73 cents per person, and we have been funding at that rate since 2002, so we have never at any point in the past 18 years increased our funding to them. So just kind of food for thought, I apologize for the length of the report, but I wanted to kind of give you guys just a starting place for a future work session on the budget. I'd really like strong consideration to be given by this Board to increase our funding. They're requesting $99,433 in our budget currently, we have $72,369 allocated towards our funding, so they're requesting an increase of just over $27,000. So that's all that I have. Thank you for listening. Sorry for the length of that, but I thought it was a good opportunity since we had a short meeting this evening.
It was very concise and to the point. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Steve.
Supervisor King?
Just something short. Could you get us some information what the other low counties are paying per person to?
Yeah, I'll email everybody, probably tomorrow, I'll kind of send you a breakdown of some information so you can have it to review. No problem.
And one more thing that I brought up before. I think after this budget session, once we get over with this budget, we're giving away a little over $2 million to different organizations. I'd like for us to have a work session so we can sit down and discuss where this money's going and what it's being used for, because I sat down and looked at them last year, and some organizations are doing the same thing that others are. So if we got, I'm just throwing this out there, if we got $5,000, $5,000 free twang, we may get a bigger bang for a buck if we just put it together, $10,000. But I think a little over $2 million is a lot of money that we don't keep eye on regularly. Like for us to have a extended work session to go through that. That's all.
Supervisor Blevins?
Just a few things. First of all, I want to congratulate Christiansburg Library and Montgomery Floyd Library for their hotspot lending. I think that is awesome that they are going to be able to do that, so when you think about library, there is more than just books, so keep that in mind. And then just a quick invite to all the Board members, RSVP Good Samaritan Hospice will be doing a Vietnam War Veterans Day event on March the 27th from 2:00 to 4:00 at Belmont Christian Church. Delegate Nick Rush will be the guest speaker as we celebrate and recognize and observe National Vietnam War Veterans Day. And also too, this week I will be participating in a fundraiser, a Living for Breathe fundraiser where it's suicide and prevention awareness, and that will be this March the 12th, that I'll be participating in that. And for Supervisor Demoss, I had the pleasure of meeting Charlie Jewell this, Onward NRV, and I was very impressed with the programs they have, especially with their campaign that they're kicking off this spring where they're going to be showing videos in the middle school and high school to make sure that people are aware of the career opportunities for IT and anything we can do to promote, so I'd be excited about that, and that's going to be growth and economic development for our county, so I look forward to those discussions as well. And that's all I have.
Vice Chair Bone?
I'd like to speak to Supervisor Biggs's comments about having some framework to perhaps cancel short meetings. I think it's important to depend on the staff if they see that it might be light before very many people put too much time and effort into preparing for the meeting. Like as of agenda review, you know, a lot of people have already finished their part of it, and then after agenda review, Ms. Sweeney has a full day's work after that. So with an agenda like we had tonight with Mr. Clark from VDOT and a resolution and a consent agenda, that's very light, especially in the middle of a budget season when we have extra meetings put into our calendar. I thought it was a good opportunity for us to consider canceling the meeting. Another question was, you know, we provide the opportunity for public address, you know, I think a lot of the public who comes to do public address looks at the agenda to make sure that what they're going to be addressing is actually part of our agenda, so if it's a light meeting, chances are we won't have very many people doing public address. So I would encourage the staff to put together some guidelines for that so that they can use their time wisely. So that's where I was coming from.
Certainly wouldn't have a problem putting together guidelines, but I would be very uncomfortable with staff making a decision on whether or not.
No, I'm not asking you to make the decision, but.
Yes, we can certainly put together.
We have enough light meetings that, you know, Mr. Clark could have come at the second meeting, you know, and then we would have only had, you know, consent agenda and Take Back the Night, and even the second meeting, we could have done Take Back the Night, so really, was there anything in the consent agenda that? So really, was there anything in the consent agenda that really needed to be done, you know? So, so yeah, if you would. You know, and I agree, Supervisor Biggs, that sometimes in the summertime, with all the vacations and things like that, it is light. So maybe, you know, in the summertime, I might potentially drop a meeting too. So with regards to Supervisor Demos's comments about Onward NRV, I know that Supervisor King asked for the other communities what they're paying, but did you have any idea about what Christiansburg and Blacksburg actually contribute?
Christiansburg contributes $5,000. Blacksburg contributes $4,200.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. All I'd like to do is go ahead and beat on the meeting cancelings again. I think probably one of the biggest factors that we have, and probably the biggest factor in deciding to have this meeting and not cancel it is because, and it's something that you had just mentioned, we didn't have very much time to notify the public. And even though it's easy to say that Mr. Clark could come back at the next one, our next meeting, he may be somewhere else. So we don't know that for sure either. It would really be nice if we're going to decide that one meeting should be canceled, that maybe we could pick a time during the summer months when it would be more appropriate to do that. But it's certainly something that we all need to talk about and come up with some kind of action so that we don't have to run around and try to contact everybody. Maybe even considering that some cancelization cancels, some canceled meetings, thank you, are going to be a result of an emergency and then others are going to be because half the board gets coronavirus or something like that. The flu or.
You can call in for isolation.
Yeah, pink eye, that's what I meant to say. So yeah, it's definitely something we need to discuss and all those other items, especially having to do with the budget. We need to.
Bring them back next Monday night.
We need to, yeah, put them in writing and that was, yeah, your ideas, if you want to shoot, that would be good to shoot everybody an email because I've got a couple of things that I'm looking at too and.
Thank you for mentioning that. If you have a question, I mentioned that Supervisor Blevins today, if you'll send the questions to either me or Carol, we'll gather the information, send it back out to all seven of you so that everybody gets the same information and hopefully that'll help with some of the questions.
Okay, well, we had more discussion than I thought. Anybody have a follow-up to that?
Only follow-up is like if something were to happen, and I talked to Craig about this, if something were to happen and we actually couldn't hold a meeting due to the coronavirus and we still needed to get business done, we don't really have a plan in place about how we would even, and I don't even know if it'd be legal conference call with everyone. We don't have any policy and I don't know if the state will make exceptions for localities, but I know at times things have to be approved so they can go forward. So that might be something that, I don't know who could give us guidance on that, if it's being looked at at any particular level, but that might be something we want to look at.
I think that brings up a good point because we can't do anything the state doesn't let us do.
Right.
And I mean, obviously the administrator has some flexibility if money's already appropriated. But the things that the board needs to decide on, if we can't get together, if we keep it quorum, then you're right. I mean, right now we'd be paralyzed.
Yeah.
The work, no different than anyone else.
Right.
So maybe the state is thinking about ways, but how do they change the code?
It'd be something interesting to bring up to VACO and see if there's any type of study going on, yeah. Because that would be.
Yeah, because we certainly wouldn't be the only county in that situation.
Oh, no.
And more than likely, there are other counties in Northern Virginia that probably would be harder.
Well, it affects like town councils, city councils, school boards, any elected body that's a locality.
We might know some people at VACO that we could ask.
Yeah, actually I'll be talking to some this week.
All right, we'll expect you two to solve that problem next time we see you. All right, if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.